Okay, nine seven o'clock. So we'll call this November first, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the King William County
Mr. Callum.
Here.
Ms. Height here. Mr. Wagner.
Yeah.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah.
Chairman Sluter.
Here. Review and adoption of leading agenda to make you have an amended agenda. Has anyone had a chance to review that? Do you have a motion to to lock the agenda? Do we have a second?
I'm second now.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Mr. Ms. Height.
Hi.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Chairman Sluter.
Hi. All right. Review and approval of the minutes from October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, our regular meeting, which should be separately. Do we have a motion to approve October four minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve that to work with regular meeting minutes as for a minute.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Ms. Height. Chairman Sluter.
Hi. All right. I'll be there in October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two joint work session with the E D A. Does anyone have a chance to review those minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the October twelfth, twenty twenty-two joint work session.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
After the seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes. In the roll call for the October twelfth meeting, the Mr. Greenwood was listed as vice vice chair as Tom Wagner.
So I had. Okay. I did see that. Do we have a motion to just okay. All right. Wait. Do we have a motion to approve those with the recommended changes? Yeah. Okay. Yes. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right. Can we roll call that please?
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Chairman Sluter.
Hi. All right. I have found we have public comment period. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak on non-public hearing matters, they can state your name, district of residence, or address. You have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes to speak on behalf of the group. And speaking on behalf of the group, state your name, district of residence, or address, or name of the group you're presenting. The public comment period is now opening. Any speakers? Anybody on one?
Yes.
We will not close the public comment period. And next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for C U P dash zero two dash twenty-two owner applicant. It's Liberty Hall V A L S C. I want to get if there are any numbers in the public who wish to speak on this, you like to state your name, district of residence, or address. You have one, two, or three minutes per individual or five minutes to speak on behalf of the group. We will approve this public hearing. Sure.
We do have a plan on this. This is a request from Liberty Hall. For a thirty-three by thirty-eight covered boathouse. This would be at fifty-two thirty-nine Green Level Road on Monkey River. So we've posted the sign. These are entrances. This is the ramp and the boathouse would be adjacent to that. And this, of course, is any map that shows everything in that area is seventy C. And that's a G I S view showing the parcel where the boathouse would be located. And of course, you can see a little bit better there with star. And that's the diagram of where the boathouse and operated would be located. And that shows he's the other parcels outlined in red there. Okay. So with this, he does not need local guidelines for approval, but he will need approval from B M R C and the Corps of Engineers as well. But it is close enough to the shoreline that he's not going to be blocking any map waters or anything. Or ordinance because of the size. He is required to give it the C U P process and then see be approved. He'll also be required to put reflective or so forth and lining on the boathouse because of the size.
Does the diagram show how far that's going to stick out into the river?
I want to say just thirty feet.
The entire walkway is sixty feet.
We have thirty-eight from here to here. Anyway. So the sixty would be from here to here, and this is thirty-eight from here to here.
I see they have pretty large boathouses. Is any dredging company required to get get the question? No.
It's actually
Yeah.
Actually, I've performed a site inspection of this site, and what I learned downriver, the next closest boathouse is three quarters of a mile away. Upriver, tracing the shoreline, once I got past three miles, I stopped. The river there is a little over three hundred feet wide. And the main low water out about fifty feet is over twenty feet of water.
Very deep.
Yes, very, very deep. It's in a curve, which typically is deeper water, and it's pretty deep right there. So that, in my opinion, the the one thing you get into with boathouses, if you have small parcels, is blocking someone's view shed. Mr. Godwold, the corporation owns the shoreline both ways for a couple of miles.
Yes, multiple properties in that whole area.
So I do not see where anyone's going to be impacted by that. It does not, you know, three hundred feet wide there with reflectors and sticking out the river thirty feet or so. I mean, it still leaves a lot of room there. So I personally do not see any issues with it.
I I don't have any at that point, but that shouldn't cause any problem, but I do um but I do not recommend this to the board for approval. If we don't get the permits from Corps of Engineers, then we
Well, it's basically the Corps is going to give you a card that says that they qualify for the region. I want to say it's statewide eight. Don't hold me to that. And B M R C, they're not going to have problem with it because they're not blocking any apple cool waters. They're not going to be over top of somebody's grounds. And that's the main things that they look for because it's a private facility. It's not a public facility. They're they probably, they may hold a public hearing, they usually do. But that would be the most
Anyone else?
And it takes about three months, once they submit that.
Yep. Yep. Well, if we were to recommend approval of the statement. Could we expect the permits to come in prior to the board?
Mr. Godwold, have you heard his name, Paul?
Well, I'm his agent. So yes, I'm actively working. We just had a B M R C just posted, and Claire, Claire's the agent in that area. She has her problem, got to be accepting it, and Corps of Engineers good. They just have to do the thing that's holding back right now from the looking about four right now is they want to make sure that they're like animal there, that it's not going to bother them. They don't see it being a problem either. So I expect
He's not able to get his public comment without all the approvals.
So we could recommend approval based on the N B M R C and all the other permits because whether we approve it or not, if he's trying to get those permits coming around
Yeah. If I may again, so at this point, if they were not to approve it, they would say that permit is required through B M R C, which then he would just have another fee paid, and then they'll probably approve it. And the reason why this one is discussed double slip, and they already said okay to double slip. It's just the county here wants to see it, that planning permission. But if anything, they would just reduce the slip size if they had to.
So I agree, we could recommend the approval and
Greenwood and slide.
I don't have any concerns with the application. I think we should keep the staff recommendations if we were, you know, to move towards approval, but I don't have any concerns at this point.
I'm just looking at this boat house, mostly part of where the boats go in, but then it looks like where the ramp is, looks like is that a dock or a deck? Or is that under the warp? It's going to be hard to get the boat down the ramp. That building is in front of us.
I think that's just the area impacted by the boat in, boathouses on the river side of the ramp. I think what they shaded in in the gray is what I saw was just actually when you're putting your boat in, the boat will be in that part of the gray area, and then the two slips will be on the river side.
That's correct. And then they'll be just having line piles right off the side. So that's if they, somebody else comes in on the existing
Okay. And you'll have to walk way around.
Right. Yeah. It's not like those are the condition wasn't as high as on the other permits.
So we ready to
represent Would you like to make any other statements, any comments?
If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. But I mean, your team did an awesome job. It's so much I can add to. It's going to change it.
And you're not Mr. Callum.
No, I'm great air to the permission of the agent, active agent on the permit also, the J P A permit. But I believe, like you said, you're going to talk to them separately.
Are there any questions for? We got I will administer a public comment period. All right, this time we'll open up the public comment period for the public hearing. And speakers, you have one or two, three minutes per individual, five minutes per group. If I am just to speak. So anybody on one? Well, this moment we will close the public comment period. Um if I'm too late, I should make a motion to either approve or then I
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve C U P dash O two dash twenty-two for the owner act of Liberty Hall V A to pass it on up to the board.
So, okay, motion made and properly seconded. We have a roll call.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Sluter.
Hi.
Did you want to make those conditions on there? I think you all mentioned about the condition. What are the conditions? One was that the all work need of the partners and state local agencies and all work be completed within two years of the approval date. President, that's a now, and the options will be reapply and recommend approval to board pending approval from the Corps of Engineers.
Next up on the agenda, old business. We have one here to review the zoning back. Yes, Jerry, do you go in?
So you have a copy of the current zoning for three sixty. And we did give you a chart tonight on what the different colors mean. So like the A C is all completely white and yellow to the R one and the red is the general business, and we have a small residential in the and then green is the industrial area. So and we have B one with its checker, and it doesn't really but we do have a little bit, maybe with a ridge. So what we did is we gave you a copy each of the definition of each particular district, what each district represents. And then we started from Sharon Road, the seven eleven side, and worked our way to West River Road. And this is a list of properties. And the tax map numbers, their current zoning, their current use, what the future land use map has them to be used for, and then any area for recommending.
One thing that we discussed in our joint meeting with the E D A was rezoning this area of the T C to name the business company. Like a discussion on specific changes that we would like to put forward regarding this area from Sharon Road to West River Road. And this is the north side of three sixty, correct, Mr. Greenwood? I'm going to start.
I don't think it would be easier if we pull up the G I S and look at it. Would that help?
Sure.
Is that something we could get on the chair?
And as you're doing that, I'm looking through this, and there's a lot of things related properties on this corridor. And with the future land use, it says that again. Consistent. Certainly, what the future land says, that's, I think we'll start us, take a look at these, what do they mean, they changed. It goes so we're doing that right now. We have made recommendations on the duty man.
She's going to pull up G I S. I have audio. Just a little G I S from thirty four industrial. We didn't put in twenty one dash sixty-one.
Shay, what we talking about later tonight? Do we have any other large properties that fall within the P U D?
Um.
Within the
But I just did all that side, but there were a couple. We have several mixed use. Three quarters of the way down.
So the the P U D and the map you had up there prior, you got about four hundred and fifty acres on that side of the highway, now that's in the P U D. That the vast majority of it's owned by Mr. Newman.
I'll pitch it.
So not this side right here for the bottom, that big piece right there, which was the second hand Simon's property.
No. Mr. Newman's further down towards Alit, past the post office on the second hand for the Simon's property across the street is where Mr. Simon's sister lives, where she just built that new house.
And they do have the majority, the big parcel of that under our future land use limits.
Right. When you go continue down three sixty past the Alit post office, Mr. Newman and his cousin own everything on the right, pretty much, to get to the fire department. And I think that we have that in P U D.
We do. It must be twenty-nine dash thirty-one, I mean, twenty-two dash thirty-one, and twenty-two dash thirty-two. One is thirty-six point two six acres, one is ninety-eight acres, both are on mixed use. And it could also be the twenty-two dash thirty-three and thirty-four because another one is eighty-four point three five, another one is seventy-six point one, and all of those are mixed.
So potentially someone could come in and buy that, and sell this other piece and cover another five, six hundred ounces. Is that correct?
The only problem right now is down that far, we don't have public water, public sewer.
Oh.
One day it'll be there.
Then we discussed that. It's after that property being mixed use commercial. And any any of the mixed use, we're going to, we're going to be pushing for these commercials. Mix. We've discussed that a number of times before. We've had a good deal of commercial on the notes. When we're talking about commercial residential, and that's where the issues are going to be. Are we going to be aligned to get enough commercial development and to offset the health of the residential? And it felt like in when we did the comprehensive plan, it felt like that was providing an opportunity for that. And I think just to back up a little bit, what, what has occurred over the last ten years is the fact that we've had three large developments, residential developments, with absolutely no commercial. Well, anything has a little bit of commercial. The other two don't have any commercial. So what we've got to look forward to is providing enough commercial to offset the residential and the Simon's track, what we're doing on, what the proposal on the north side, we'll be discussing more later. It does appear that we've got big marshall that's proposed back in that. It appears to be enough to offset.
And we don't have the townhomes currently going this direction, which we are doing an expansion going the other way towards Kansasville. So when we get to that, we do have expansion of some other facilities. I think Mr. Callum did mention that some of the land there is probably going to be hard to develop because it is very steep. But there is still good land to develop that.
So we're going up to and that would be on commerce park. We don't have a sewer plant.
We currently have sewer plant to the commerce park. I thought it was just water. So when the, when Cannington was built several years ago, the water sewer was extended, extended from central garage three quarters of a mile of Cannington. Correct? So that was feasible for the developer to do it at that time.
Yes.
Because I think they did it on their so someone goes down three quarters of a mile to Alit to this four hundred acres on that mountain, that probably would be feasible, I think. They would put in there, could possibly put in their utilities to gain four, about a hundred houses.
Possibly.
To the commercial building that's at the second entrance off three sixty of Cannington. Is that completed yet?
They were promised office branch. They don't have a final yet.
Do we know if there's any, if they have any
They cannot get electrical here. It's been going back over a full year. So that's the only component they're missing is the gear to part the buildings up, and they're still waiting on that gear.
Do we know if there's any tenants that they have?
We have one that just made application.
What, you know, what uses that?
I did not make a draft with Shire, remember? I think he was on top of apparel, needs to be, when some type of building, you know?
I went and looked at those bills, they, they're basically office on the front core and then warehouse on the rear.
For the blow up, blow up rush.
Yeah. I mean, they, like the apparel or something like that, it is a really nice space to do.
For a moment.
Right.
I'm thinking of the, yeah. Pictures or written out.
Taking an area, you have your warehouse in the back, but office in the front. They still have some TCO stuff inside work that they need to complete as well.
I will, I will tell you, because this was part of our earlier discussion. They didn't think it through real well, and as part of discussion we had earlier. Three phase powers on the other side of 360. And most people with any type of warehouse basement, any type of large tools or whatever, kind of want three phase power. So when they designed that building, and, and when I say the gears, the electrical components. Have to be designed either for single phase or for three phase, and they designed it for single phase. They're finding out now they wish they had a design.
So they're having trouble getting, uh, the man into, they won't run it under?
They, they will, but it's, it's.
Mostly.
Yeah, several, several tens of thousands of dollars to do that. So when we, and that is, I bring that up. When we talk about commercial development, three phase power is huge. Probably right up there with water and sewer, and three phase power is on the opposite side of 360, all the way to A.
They're all going to need to, to bring it across the road eventually.
There's no room left, not even at Simon's track. Three things, they have to break there too.
I need a finger.
I think the power actually is on that side of Simon's, and then somewhere about the, over way market, it crosses the road. And then all the way to Alet.
It's cheaper to order to bring it down from that, from that point. Over 360 than it is to go under 360.
Um, if, if, that's all in my head, I, I can, my, my, only, uh. I just had an estimate from Dominion to run a mile of three phase power. Uh, to something over in King and Queen County, it's nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Running a mile. So again, totally, oh, oh, correct, that's all right. Right, so again, not, not my expertise, I just. I just was involved in that aspect of it.
Well, that's something we need to keep in mind.
For some reason, I was thinking it was on that side as well, but.
Again, it's just, just like the water sewer, the developer wants it, they're going to pay for it. But I, I just think it's a lot of the we know where and said, kind of how we can work around it a little bit, because it is, any, any type of. Electric motors, gears, and Mr. Horton is actually the resident expert on that stuff, is kind of requiring three phase power.
Ms. Graham, when you look at this, um, the chart you gave us, and look at the future land use map, are there any? Is there anything that you can add that you need to recommend him? Or any changes does?
I do think we need to take a look at it and see how far we like carry for the business. Uh, they did have one under, for the bottom, 22-34V. Um, currently taking V1, they have a commercial use, but that is tribal land, it is under final tribe. So it's actually been around. And then there was one toward, um, the bridge that I didn't go on here, that is owned by David and Lynn Fisheries. And they have that as commercial property, but I just, I left it all here.
Is that open?
It's right in the bridge.
It's the best site ever opened.
Okay, so we're, we're learning the north side, the first track is the Simon's track.
Yeah.
That's a boat, yes. We want to stay. The next is. Right, next, because there, um, I believe that Shay is also referred in that in what's on the bottom language.
Can you pull up 28-56A?
The new company. I have the old middle way on the south side of that.
Is that where his sister built?
It is.
And there's an old house, or there was an old house, I think they burned it down.
Yep. The one that's got the clear dirt spot around it is the new house.
Yeah, and I think they burned the old one down. I can stand down, do you need me to stand down?
I know, good one.
Well, we can do like, um, street view of that house. Sometimes it walks, sometimes it doesn't, let's say. No, it doesn't.
Okay, first property, there's.
The last property there.
Oh, Barbara, can you sign?
The one on this side of it.
The bar thing's on the left, and on the south side of 360.
Okay, now which side are we looking at?
The Sharon Road line. That's Sharon's seven one.
That would be very. Okay, so. We've got 711, Howard Townsend, Simon's, schools of barn and farm bureau, then you've got a stretch of houses. To the 14 acre piece, Caviar, it's got to stay. And the Alet post office then gets to middle.
So the parcel that's in blue right now, that's a single family residence under a future land use, they are commercial. And then the other parcel. Is also was a residence, they have it as commercial. And then if you go on down. Where Mr. Kelly kind of. Wanted that what it was, the first one is, uh, parking. Uh, the second one is an office, go back a little bit. Okay, so. Where it starts at the bottom, the smaller lot, it's. That one's parking, the next one is an office. The next one is a residence. The next one's an office. The next two are residences, they're woods. The next one is a residence for the park business. The next two are residences, the two wooden lots, and other residents. I think the other one is a vacant person. And then the next four residences, the next one's vacant, then the next four are residents, and then the next one's vacant. And then, then we get to the old American Legion building. Which the American Legion building is AC, that should be commercial, and then they moved out under the church.
The church. Yeah.
What is the goal?
I'm sorry?
What is the goal here?
Well, if we want to re-send, we need to look at what we need to resent it as. We need to look at what the future land use stamp was approved for. And kind of stay in line with what we've approved of the future land use now. Even if you don't want to do it all now. But portions of it, right now, it's spots that own one end of 360 to the other. So we need to kind of get a board in one, get your businesses in one, your industrial, and another. You're going to have some residence, you're going to have some farmland, and you may want to keep it as that. Or some of this, you want to go ahead and, go ahead and resent it, so it's ready, if the developer does want to come in.
So one of the things I, I think Mr. Waggonaluded to, and correct me if I'm wrong, under the future land use, we've already identified that strip. If someone wants to come in and ask. They may. So the, the second part of that is, um, after the EDA meetings last time. Uh, I actually went out with a couple of the EDA members and turned a report in to, to Mr. Ashcrab. And from, from river to river, there's only about 18 properties. Of any size that, that potentially could be of some commercial use. So I think the, the plan down the road somewhere, again, I'm trying to walk us down tonight, was. If the EDA decided they thought some of those properties re-send would help them to have something to show people who wanted to come into the county. And they could come in and ask to re-send.
I, I got a problem. If the EDA. Should not be dictating at a time how, how this is set up. But if the EDA identifies a business or industry or whatever that they want to come in. Then they can. Get into the planning position, and ask that to be done for. I or B2 or whatever. Uh, that, going there and try to. Make any changes in that before, before that. The wrong one.
You're saying as far as, in like it changes, you're, you're saying you wouldn't prefer to say.
Prefer.
They had any specific.
Yeah, request. If, if, round, if the EDA has a specific request, we can work with them to resent that. Whatever use it is, if there is, if there is a reason for it, so. But just to go in there and do a speculative resent, uh, I think that would be wrong. And one of the issues with speculative resent is. Once, once that's resent to be too. Uh, we have terrible control, no control, we have, it's easy. We don't have any control over the use in that. And. That's. That's where, you know. We, we need to work with it, we can do it back. And then, yeah, we need to work with it, but at the same time, we don't want to sit around and hope, say, we should not be. Resent, uh, just to, just. And that's the good thing about the future land use, we can show it when we think we're landing it now. And we can go back and revise that future land use map if we want to. It would be better to. Resent some of those properties, but particularly some of that, it seems probably a long way. Resent that to.
We do have some that own business.
Yeah.
We hardly get business now, but there's some that they see. Or there's some other, something other than business. They shouldn't be, but they are. Um, so that, I mean, those are ones that we get to forget.
So, so I think the question comes down to. Do we, do we resent some properties? So if someone comes looking, that we have something that's ready to go, to, to save time, to cut through all the red tape. Because in the EDA meeting, what we talked about, typically someone looking is going to want. To not have to wait once and once.
Yeah.
And doesn't the, the use matrix kind of dictate what can or cannot be done? So even if we have a piece of property, and someone comes in and wants a business that's not in the use matrix, then that would not be allowed.
Would not be permitted, even if we resent. They would open it A2 and they resent it to B2, they're going to put a store in there. And they decide they're not going to do it. Well, they can sell that property to somebody else, you can't put conditions on resenting. But if it's a CUP that's required, we don't put conditions all day long.
But if you look at the. The table, how many uses, uh, look at that paper, majority of that is not.
Finish use. Yeah, most of it is not.
And for instance, that point, or it says shopping center on there. No, that's only, that's by the line. Wouldn't have put shopping center in by the line, without us getting any details.
We have one thing that's coming in that, um. Um, they, they've submitted preliminaries of a store. But it's already zoned, what it needs to be zoned as, so they did not want to come or resent me. Which, you know, that was favorable to them, and we are ready to come in, so.
If it's, yeah, as long as it's paid for, that's my problem, but we can't hear.
Where, where my thoughts are, is we. We're not exactly in a position as a county to really like. Limit what businesses should be coming here or, or want to come here. We need to diversify our tax base. Um, and the longer we go with growing the, the dense residential without growing our business tax base. Um, the worse it turns, but. Um, I would like to see us do whatever we can to, to, to streamline the process to get businesses in here. Um. If there are certain businesses that we know that we would prefer not to see along this corridor. I think that maybe we, we could look at the use matrix to identify which ones we don't want to do by right.
It's, it's not so much the. Businesses. The issue with businesses coming in. The issue is with our lack of control over how that property is developed. We talked a whole lot in development, comprehensive plan, we talked a whole lot about managing development. And if we get out there to the point where we can't manage what's coming in here, then, uh. We're going to end up with all the 360 of my days.
So on this, um, in this corridor, there's a lot of small parcels. Uh, some of which are business, businesses as they are, correct? Some of the small parcels are currently, are currently not owned in business, but they're, but they have businesses in now. There's small parcels, you're not going to be able to do that so much with the most businesses.
But it's, yeah, no, you can't.
So, and I think for some of those, especially the small parcels, we should probably go ahead and change the, that zoning to reflect. Yeah, with the future land. Is larger parcels that we want to make sure we control.
Yeah, manage those, yeah, not control, but manage.
Yeah, exactly. Manage, yeah. It responds to the way that we want to see those parcels, you know, um, developed, you know.
But I think, I, I think if it's, I think if they're already businesses, we should go ahead and resent them about the business. And looking at future land use map, we didn't. Get into that, with developing future land use map, there's big issues with some of its parcels, but. Um, if you've got a strip of B2 businesses, you might look in the future of those. Change the, the whole strip, change into the word, somebody might want to come in and buy a couple. Some type of industrial development.
I was one thing to keep in mind, if we have six businesses in a row with 400 360, that's going to be six different entrances.
And we don't allow that. And, and, and under the new TCO, we do not allow that. Under the TCO, we, we require, we look at together, we require that between entrances for the inter. Connecting.
Can be that, that's a, um, strict entrance operation as well on 360. And if there's, if it's like one big development, like a shopping center, it's like a thousand feet between entrances.
Yeah, if they have a crossover, it's 1,100 feet between entrances, if they have. A major entry for the crossover. If it's, uh. If it's a second-lined intersection, that goes up to 1,500. If it's, if it's a second-lined intersection, it goes up to 1,500, 400 feet. And, or just an entrance, an in and an out entrance, 300, 400 feet. Be that's 300, 400 feet. Or if it says by the line. So, how can we move on?
So, if I could ask the question, Mrs. Graham. So, the breakout of the listings that you provided, I noticed that there's a power and says proposed. Is there some recommendation from you and staff as to some suggestion of what you think we need to do? As far as the properties, for instance, that may be zoned AC correctly currently that are being used as a business? Is it your recommendation by breaking this out for us to consider rezoning those properties to match what the future land use is or what is our goal?
I think if we're going to do any type of rezoning, we need to look at our future land use map and try to stay in line with what was proposed on the future land use map. But certainly the ones that are being used as a business, I think they should be zoned appropriately and not AC or R1.
Will we run into any issues by rezoning B2? Obviously, they're going to pay a higher tax rate, just the cost of doing business?
They probably already are because of use, but don't hold me to that, I would have to check if they're going to share. And that will check with her to see. But, I mean.
The state government actually says, mustn't I rezonate, they'd pay higher taxes.
But if it's a business use, then they should be paying the business tax.
And I guess the ones, using example, the schools of Barnett building, the bomb bureau building. If those businesses were sold to another business, the entrances would be grandfathered in, they would not?
Provided they weren't vacant for two years or the use ceased for two years. If it sold to him to somebody else, same type of business, they're grandfathered in. But if they didn't let it sit vacant for two years, they lose any grandfather status that they have.
And could they take one of those lots and improve that building, make it larger and still be grandfathered in?
They cannot increase the non-conforming structure.
But we've kind of got some control there.
Sherry, if we decide to rezonate some of these properties, particularly the ones that are probably zoned now, the final commission can't accept. The question is, if the final commission that the business and is approved by the board, is that in charge of the rezoning? The way I would do that, that would be.
We, I mean, it's the county doing it and we would pay all of the fees for advertising, holding meetings. You have to notify so many people down the road, and I forgot what the, it's the right good ways on those sides that are to be notified for any rezoning. Of course, they have the right to speak whether they're in favor of it or against it.
So, then the county could go ahead and rezonate and they would be in charge for the businesses that aren't used.
We have that, that would be a plus.
Instead, would we want to reach out to the current owners to discuss this before we made a proposal to do this rezoning? To make sure that they're not objectionable going in or how would we approach that?
We could get a list that we want to look at possibly rezoning. And we could send a letter to them and invite them to a meeting to speak and get their feedback from them.
I would suggest if we wanted to make a change, that we would do something like that to make sure that they were on board before we made any decisions to go to a public hearing. I would also suggest that, just in talking through this today, that if we made a decision to do something like that, because of the cost of advertising, et cetera, we would certainly want to do the majority of the properties that we were looking at all at one time to be able to take that opportunity versus breaking that out separately or only doing a portion at a time. So, I think we really need to put a lot of thought into exactly what we would want to do, you know, and to make sure that we have the volume in from those people before we would take that one. Otherwise, it would be a significant cost that would be wasted if it wasn't something that we thought we could, you know, get a recommendation for approval.
Sherry, I may, yes, share my question. When we we've had a lot of good discussion here so far and a lot of different sort of opinions. I'm just wondering what the timetable is or whatever, what, what, what are the issues?
I think the rezoning process, it's probably going to be two and a half, three months. Because we have to have meetings and then public hearings.
And that's where we've we've gotten a lot of input, but at the same time, we I'm hoping in a very good place.
Right.
So, would we be better to table this, maybe never get, see if we can get more information?
I'm okay with that, as long as, Sherry, your staff could put together the list of businesses that are currently operating that we can go ahead and look at, you know, that as a reason for sure. And then I have an opportunity to put together something as far as identifying those, the owners of those parcels. And also staff recommendations on additional parcels that would make sense to rezonate as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think I'm talking to Ms. Graham earlier, I think she's got a pretty full plate for the next meeting.
Let's do this for January.
We have a big project that's going to be on. So, to that, I mean, everything you said, I concur with. I would be, the pros and cons, what Miss I was saying about going out to the people, I 100% agree with that. The pros are, they have the property rezoned, so when they do decide to sell, it's already rezoned. The cons are, we've rezoned, they're going to pay higher taxes, so I don't know how that's going to be perceived. Certainly, I would want to be asked how I felt about that before it was just blanket done. I still, I still think the county needs to look at a couple key pieces that are larger. So, if we get some interest from a larger corporation, we can cut that two and a half, three months out to be more attractive to them, to help speed things along. And, but I don't think the next December meeting is the time to put that on there.
No, that's, that's pretty quick for holidays.
Last one, if they're receiving a lot of business, then they should recheck the business and who changed that in their actual business then. And they want to find that, so I don't, I don't.
No, I was stating what was said, I don't disagree with you. I mean, if they've been running a business on an AC parcel, they didn't get five years.
Yeah, I just, I think to Incite's comment, I think, just doing it without.
Give them a chance to speak.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, and I think what you're saying, thanks, Karen, for that. We were in agreement here.
We have a lot of opposition and, you know, that could be one thing.
And part of that is how we communicate it as well, so.
And we may, we do send the letters out to have them come in and voice their opinion on it. We may want to do one whole side, one meeting, and then the other side, the next meeting. Because it can be quite a few people, but we'll get the list together, we can work on both sides, so we can see how many people that we're looking at that will be notified.
So, the only benefit for the county is the regular compliance and the higher tax base. That is the only benefit.
All right, moving on, the next up, I don't know, this is the discussion, the TCO. Copies of the TCO, starting that. One of the items that we had discussed over the previous several months has been acceptable building material within the TCO. Anybody want to leave off of that? I, there, you've been asked up for strongly about certain materials that aren't in there.
Well, I just, correct me if I'm wrong, I think at a joint meeting with the board a couple of months ago, we had talked about New Kent County and some of the things they allow as far as steel siding and stuff like that. And I just, I don't think that really, that one way or the other. The only, the only comment that I would have is the building that was just built, Dixon's on the side of 360 up there, that's, to me, that's a pretty attractive looking building. It's got steel siding on it. Now, they did require, you know, stone, three or four feet up.
The steel siding looks a lot better than that.
Right, agree. Yeah, I would not be for steel from the ground up. I think that is too plain looking, but with some sort of lane scoting around the bottom, the stone, the brick, you know, dry, it's stuck or whatever. I mean, I think that would be a happy medium, but when you look at steel siding versus some of the other things that are already allowed, I think steel is much more attractive. So, I mean, products are evolving all the time. So, we're going to have to keep revisiting this and if someone comes in with plans, we may answer. Right now, I think you have to say so.
It's up to the zoning administrator. And, you know, we will definitely try to stay uniform as we, you know, have been letting people do, but I know that's not what y'all want to do. Y'all want to have a certain type of materials and so forth, but it can, you know, it can be approved and some that you want to review prior to approval. But we do have under number eight, architectural, which says all principal buildings with any single development project shall have a complimentary architectural appearance with the use of some of our building materials, scale, color, and other architectural features. And that is like with Dixon, I mean, that's what he did. He used the metal, but he used the stone to get that architectural feature, which is attractive.
The, I did a little bit of research on other counties around the area. One that I saw that was interesting was Richland County, and it's a listed materials that are approved. They had it set up as a chart, actually, and listed materials that are approved, you know, no stains, buts. The another column, I'm trying to remember what exactly the language was, but it was acceptable but not preferred. And then they had another column of material that would not be approved. So, something like we talked about bottom of the side, for example, that is one that we would not want to have. That could be something we could take a look at as well. Or maybe instead of a acceptable but not preferred, maybe put that as a review of your current, you know, case, my faces. Just a thought, I really liked that when I saw it, it was easy to read, not confusing at all. But, but to add to that, meanwhile, suspecting briefly about this as well, having some language in there that allows nationally recognized franchises or businesses to have a, you know, to be accepted, isn't that? And I actually printed off, this is from New Kent County, I'll just read it real quick, it's not long. What their language was is nationally recognized and or trademark colors, whether those pictures were similar type features, may be permitted on building size, volumes, or other complimentary architectural features with the approval of the zoning administrator. I think definitely, you know, some of the piece of mind to some of the larger businesses that might be looking for that.
And some of your franchise, they want their building to look a certain way with certain colors. And they don't want to give away it, so.
As far as the building materials, how do we want to proceed with putting this language into the into the TCO? What kind of process?
Now, I have prior to this, we had certain materials that were permitted. And if it wasn't on that list, then they were not permitted. But like y'all have said, things have come a long way over the years. So, with the steel buildings, these materials do not look like steel, they last forever, then they don't fade, and they've got like a 25, 30-year lifetime on them. You take vinyl siding, which is something we were allowed, vinyl siding is not going to hold up 45, 30 years. Not on a commercial building.
Funny, Mr. Chair, so sometimes we did, because we have architectural requirements that have a review in a prior life, so vinyl was accepted, but only if it was a certain grade. So, you could do that with steel, and I think Mr. Kellen had mentioned this in a previous meeting. If they're going to allow steel, you can say it has to be a certain gauge or whatever the criteria is. But to leave it at a blanket statement by the zoning administrator, being the zoning administrator, you know, I don't want to be questioned by A, B, and C's asking, well, why did you approve it for this person and not this person? It can't be just a blanket, just approved by the zoning administrator. So, if you have some sort of gauge, some parameter, if you're going to allow steel, that's kind of what sets it apart, is if you have that criteria for the steel. And that's what we did with the vinyl siding, was to say it has to meet the specification. And all the builders had to prove that it met that criteria.
Looking forward to the TCO, the TCO. The fund has recommended building. If they agree with that with some changes. Have you got that straight?
Yeah, y'all should have a copy of it right behind the TCO page 153.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think Christina's observation of it being a blanket open for the same administrator leads to confusion and it would be a lot it would be a lot better for us to have some definitions wrapped around that. I also like what you observed from one of the other counties, both what they would recommend, what they would not allow, and then I don't know how you would address the in-between of what you said. Not preferred, but.
Right, and that's not necessarily have to happen even at all. If we know what we feel is acceptable and with, and what we know we don't want to approve, then we could just, we could have just to, you know.
Or is it, or is it easier just to say what we know we don't want, knowing that the standards change so much all the time? What I'm concerned about is, if you have a definitive list of recommendations of what could be used and that things change so often, how many times will we have to come back and revisit this and change it? And so, I guess I'm throwing it out there of, would we be better off saying what we know we do not want versus specifically limiting to what we do? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there for consideration.
I know we probably last couple to y'all for reviewing approval, even though the ordinance changed the way that it did. Just, um, you know, make sure that, um, one page one sixty-two under the PUD. It just talks about building materials utilized for the apartment side, the size of the building shall be limited to brick, split base block, flooded block, tile, concrete tile, driven or other simulated stucco, if this real or simulated wood and or glass. Standard concrete basement block shall not be used for the apartment side and sides of any building. And it goes into other materials as well. So you want to use these materials listed under the PUD? Want to use the materials listed under the PUD?
There are others that we could have, but that was, that was no. I think you, we mentioned before was use similar language as to how it's put in the, um. It sounds like y'all as a staff have a good idea as to what we have. It sounds like we have pretty, because you can sense this. Really the main material that we'd like to see added is, is the, uh, is the steel, but I think that we also, uh, I think judging by what we discussed, that we'd like to see steel with some kind of connotation of skirting or, um, and using conjunction with, you know, um, nationally block or whether, um.
So do you want us to kind of look at, we can't confuse it to learn and try to come up with wording similar to that to bring before y'all?
And I consider the, um, uh, one right here that has the, um, they actually have this part of their. Um, paragraph where it talks about nationalized, um, businesses, where it is and trade laws and so forth. And does it say in there that New Kent allows the steel? This is, um, and there's some things that are short. This is from their meeting back in February of this year, so it's, um, but this is, um, vinyl siding, flat or corrugated metal or concrete block shall not be used for exterior siding material in the building except the.
Siding, maybe he says trim material. And so that, that, I'm still.
That steel is the, the term.
Well, that's, that's the flat steel, like Mr. Wagner said, you, you don't want the corrugated or, like, the, the flat panel steel siding.
So, um, yeah. There's, there was another, actually, it's in the same, um, in the same one that New Kent had, that I also like. They had an entire section, um, it, sure, if you want to write this down, section ninety-eight dash one zero seven one. Is a whole paragraph of exceptions to the additional development requirements. And these, this could be something where just having this in our ordinances would be a, a good way for a company that's looking to locate here, but it's maybe just outside of our. Can still have a way, and if they had a whole list of, um, exceptions that could be named and it's a through that. I'm not going to read it at the time of state, but it's something that we can look at and, and discuss. It gives, it, it gives somebody an opportunity that maybe, you know, we could, um, work with, uh,
So we're, we're looking, if we skip the December meeting, we would vote on this on the January meeting. So that puts us another two months out, which means we're still operating under the old.
We would review it in January. Um, it's, we can't make a change without having a public hearing. Um, so we're going to probably have multiple changes that we can put under one public hearing. We don't want to have a public hearing on this every month.
Right.
Um, and it may be something we want to do a work session, uh, with the board of supervisors and before we get to that public hearing, watching as well.
The, the Dixon building that again, it's a very comforting building. How are they able to do that?
You know, it was not done from that one. They just got them back. Um, and then in the midst of all this, before they ever got the final, the ordinance changed. Um, it was acceptable the way that they had it. It was attractive. So we did not go in. We had a couple of businesses that, that did that in the midst of the changing of all of this.
Do we, do you know any businesses or, uh, out there that have been waiting to for the decision to be made on this because pushing it out another three or four months?
No, well, right now, the way it reads is up to the zoning administrator. It doesn't say you can, can't use any specific material. So the last couple that we've had, we brought before y'all just to get your opinion as to whether.
That's the item six we're hearing, um, that you mentioned earlier. It says building exterior is visible from U S highway three sixty or state highway thirty shall be approved by the city.
So that, that'll be our checks and balances until.
Until then, and we will still do the same thing. If a business comes in on three sixty or thirty, uh, we'll just bring an elevation view just to get your input on that. We're probably saying yes or no. Maybe we do something different.
Okay, are we good on?
Are they the only items on the TCO that we, is there anything else on the TCO?
I think the, I probably took care of this for that. We do have some diagrams, um, that we've got and that we'll show you, but I think we've pretty much had that taken care of.
Land change and setbacks.
The, the biggest thing was the building exterior in TCO.
And I remade the, the clarification in the current TCO one, where, where did that start? Whether, yeah, I know we, we agreed that it was going to be the, the center line of the highway.
Of the seven hundred feet. We said center line, um.
Oh, the four lanes on three sixty and seven hundred thirty, but.
Okay, so that is, that changed, I think, already.
Um, that's the way it reads. It's, it's still not very clear. We brought up it some morning here to clarify it a little bit better.
One, one thing that, that I, I actually talked to you about earlier, probably last week, we skipped that, but that I see being a potential problem, we need to address something, um, is how far can someone tear something down and still rebuild? Because you're going to run into is that a building will be putting on a foundation versus a building that's on slab versus, you know, I think we need to have some very clear language in there. How far, you know? So some, if someone, again, if someone had a footing in the ground. I know you guys had some, some things you were kind of thinking, but I don't think it's very clear.
Yeah.
Where that come into buildings that is?
Uh, there's really not anything in the building code that addresses that. Um, I know usually if you don't tear down all the walls, um, then it's not a full reconstruction. But once you tear down all the walls, it's normally reconstruction. But let me do some research on that and get that back to y'all and, and see whether to look out what these are doing with it.
As people start to rehab some of these older buildings that are in the former board, I think that's going to come up frequently.
Yeah, right now, the other thing that we have is it's an act of God. Um, then they can rebuild in the same location provided that, that's done within the two-year period.
I haven't done any research on that, but I would imagine it is.
January.
No, it's a January meeting. Um, and if, does anybody have anything else? I've got one thing. Under frontage landscaping, this is in the TCO. We've got some problem with the language. We have a landscape section that has buffer and screen. But doesn't have anything in the landscape section about streets getting. In the TCO, we say frontage landscaping. And then we go right down to the next paragraph and say a landscape buffer. A buffer is between two properties, not between the front of the property and the alley. So we really, I don't know that that can be done right away, but if we're going to change the TCO, we probably should try to pick it up on my plan, but I think we need to look at that and change some of that.
We've also added under, and then for E two, um, it's just an additional buffer of ten feet along the property's frontage to be preserved for future rider pedestrian improvements.
And I've got some comments that I can give to y'all that, that I'll thank for that, but maybe change in my. Uh, was there any discussion from anyone on commission as far as the P and D? I just, yeah, that's. But then, here is, we talked about when we had a public hearing on the TCO. And you were saying that it would be, once we had the, uh, the concept line in and have gone through that and basically proved that, then we could have a public here. Under it is the fashion group forty-five, um, to actual the concept land pre-application moving for formal application, first line district application shall be submitted. A complete application, that is called for a public hearing, they'll insist of a master plan. The design name and the community, community impact statement. That indicates to me that we have to do the master plan.
And they may have submitted that. They've brought in a lot of paperwork. I have not opened it.
We, we certainly need to go through that master plan and, and that statement.
Yeah, and there are companies that do these all the time, um, and they're very familiar with our ordinance, so I have a feeling that they've covered all the bases, but I will take a look and we'll get them, um, we should have a PDF. Sure they sent us a PDF as well, and we'll send the PDF out to y'all just so you can get started on it anyway. Okay, which are copies.
And then I have, if I could, a couple of comments in here. Under intersection. This is the intersection eighty-six times three forty-five. The concept land shall be submitted to the zoning administrator consultation and discussion and shall include the location and components identified in section eighty-six, dash nineteen point three, eighty. That section does not exist.
Yeah, and that was, yeah, we had that noted before.
Okay. Uh, and the other one. Section eighty-six dash three forty-seven, general standards of development, open space requirement. There's another section that is. Open spaces under the section eight oh one. But anyhow, this, I'll, rather than that, I'm, I'll give you that, but it is. It refers, again, it refers to something that does not exist in fact, in part, out of the section eighty-six. Two thousand five, or a minutes to present importance. Has to be the concept one. Anyone else with anything on the, the P and D limits? All right, um, next item, guys, uh, I'm going to go to the inside of some new business, just real briefly. Mr. Sherry, can you go over the minor subdivision requirements issued that has been under the five?
I guess. This is something, uh, under the old ordinance, they were required to have three hundred feet frontage on, um, the road in order to have a minor subdivision, which is four lots. Under the new ordinance, they are not allowed to have their frontage on the road. They have to have one road that goes to the four parcels. Um, something else we took out of the old ordinance is the flat lots. We have hundred, we allow one flat lot. Under the new ordinance, we do not allow flat lots. Um, so it has come up that we should allow, um, some of the lots to have frontage um, on the public road, even if it's the one, two lots sharing one entrance to cut down on the entrances on the, on the road versus making everybody do a private road. Has to be, be not requirements, but it's a private road.
Yes. But it can be, it, it can be done and far beyond the table.
It could, yeah, and I think.
Or it can be done private road and return the, yeah.
And, and with the main degree of.
It's currently the new ordinance requires one entrance to feed as a feeder for each.
Up to four lots.
We and then with this, we've discussed all of this quite a bit. Questionnaires were sent out. We got a lot of feedback from the community. We have feedback from pretty much everybody in this. There's been approved and there are a lot of advantages to doing this one. The, the single entrance is preferred by the law because that is a it's a gold entrance, two-way entrance, but entrance by its, uh, I think usually require not ditching along the entire frontage like Houston. I don't think we require twenty-five foot, uh, required ditching, like, but, uh, those are thankful miss, but, uh, I, I would be encouraged to anything to do with that. Do you see any issues that you've come across any so far that, uh, this would?
Um, we haven't had too many come through, uh, but I've seen it both ways where, um, it benefits some of those builders slash developers to have one lane that will access properties that they wouldn't normally be able to do anything with, but I've also seen where they cannot easily get the lots that they want if they can't access it, access it from the public road. So I've seen it go in both directions.
If there are situations where there's like no other way to do it except the, what the old ordinance would have approved, is there, is there a way that they could bring that to the, to the zoning administrator or to?
We could not do it administratively now. Against the ordinance, but it's in one way.
So there's no, there's no exception clause.
Um, no, unless we want to, with the new ordinance.
The only exceptions to that would be if somebody, I haven't, under the man who's over there, under two miles. VDOT would not take those into the system. VDOT requires at least two lots.
So, I mean, it's something where if somebody is going to do a two lot minor, whole shared entrance. But that's really not helping the whole lot, I guess.
That's basically what we're doing.
But they're still basically doing a lane for two. Um, kind of doing, doing the same division. It's not really going to help a lot to do that.
So, Mr. Chandler, I guess my question to Mrs. Graham would be, um, I know this was brought up for discussion tonight. Um, but what is the priority as far as what you've seen requests coming in? Is this something that's higher priority or meets the same priority as some of the other things that we're trying to address um, from the January perspective, or is this, where do you see the priority? Do we need to make a change, or do we need to consider changes right now to try to get this addressed quickly?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we need to address in here. But I do think we need to, to look at these smaller subdivisions. I'm not talking about the major right now, but, um, maybe just kind of go back and, and look at the minor, look at the single lots. Um, we did go back and address the problem with the, the 25 acre exempt parcel. That was the only one that used to be allowed off of 30, um, or 360. And that got taken out and everything else got put in, or you could have an entrance off of 30. Um, but we put that back in and then we also put in, um, allowing the, we're paying the division for the 25 acre exempt parcel, or dividing exempt parcel, um, if it's 58 or so more. Because the ordinance rates want you to do an exempt parcel, you can't divide again. So we're taking care of the 25 acre exempt, um, but maybe readdress the minor. And see if there's some changes that y'all want to make.
And so what kind of timeframe are you looking for? If we needed to do this and make some updates, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? Because again, this is something that'll have to go to public hearing.
Yeah, and we can't take public hearing support every month. We need to get multiple things, do a work session with them. They probably will come to feelings. So, I, I think we, this is one of the things with, with everything else, that we get a group of things together. Whole work session with them. Get input from them and then work on our public hearings.
So, looking ahead, then, obviously, our next meeting will be pretty full with more public hearings. And we'll have January's meeting, where, where we already have a pretty, um, pretty good amount of stuff to discuss there. Shouldn't we maybe look at holding a joint meeting, uh, for work session at the board in Jan, later in January, before their next meeting?
I really think we should do a work session first and get everything together that we want to do. Then have a first choice work session with the board and then proceed with public hearings.
Okay.
On the side of that point, the, I agree with Ms. Graham and Mr. Wagner, a lot of this stuff kind of worked out for 25 acre exams, the families, so forth and so on. The, the minor subdivisions, the way it used to be four lots each individual entrance. And then it was asked so that you didn't see so many properties coming down the road, was there a way to stack the properties, have two in front, two in the back? And if so, you would have to allow a gravel road to be built, maybe some sort of VDOT entrance, a gravel road and allow those houses to be stacked that way. The problem that has presented itself in a little bit of sense of urgency is you can still do four lots along the road. But now Ms. Graham's office is requiring that in between lots two and three, you do a 50 foot right away. You then have to cut across those two lots to get to the outside lots. So, in the event of fire or rescue, they've got to drive in up to 750 feet, cut across a 300 foot lot, and then come back up to the house. And I talked to Chief Reeves about that. And he said, you know, one of the things we could do that he would be in favor of to cut the entrances down, I think Ms. Graham alluded to, to have shared entrances, to one driveway, so two parcels, one serve two parcels. So a fire truck could come in, go left or right. He said, certainly they're not going to park the truck in the road and drag a four inch fire hose two or 300 yards up through the woods and a 65 foot long fire truck trying to go in. And then you're creating a shared right away, not only down through the middle, but then across the two parcels to get to the two outside parcels. So I think a happy medium, you know, the four inches were too much, I, I will say that. The shared entrances, one driveway for every two lots. And I think VDOT would support that. I, I read the VDOT manual and, and talked to some of the folks at VDOT. And there's really nothing in there that says that they would be against that.
That, no, there's nothing in there requiring that they would be against doing that. However, I, I don't agree with access for fire trucks. Access on, on the current entrances that we have is more of a problem than fire trucks than would be with a VDOT standard, road going in and serving four.
But you'd have to drive 700 feet in, 300 foot across and come 700.
It depends on the shape of the car. Some, like you said, some parcels you can manage that time. If they're responding, um, you might have, you might have a road going in and then going through all the properties. There's several variables.
I just began in talking to Chief Reeves about that, the, the idea of driving a 65 foot long fire truck in there, navigating, you're creating road maintenance agreement, you create easements, not only down one side of property.
Put it in the house and set that. Which sounds good. And you got an entrance that's named, named after that property. Be able to bike the tire and be able to turn and get back in.
Well, at that point, that's on me as a homeowner. I'm not relying on my next door neighbor to maintain his road and his property up to my standards to be able to get.
That's it. It might be on you as a home, that's one problem that we're facing now with, um, the debt, kind of thing, because you've got too many, not too many properties, you know, that, uh, don't, don't care too much about, and, and just as long as I get them now, they're not, they're not a big concern.
I mean,
entrance, but what precisely do you try to be?
Now, I don't mind that. And VDOT requires 28. And we have to get a permit. They come out and expect it won't release until they measure, make sure you put in.
Ms. Graham, do you see, do you see a solution that would work? That'll help, I guess, mitigate some of the concerns on, that Mr. Cohen and Mr. Wagner?
Well, I would like for it to remain like it is, but also provide a joint drive for two parcels. I think that would help. So, where you have the shared, you only want to have, you know, two driveways or four lots. Um, but I still want to have the other one, the, the current one that we have available.
As an option.
As an option for people, because that's helped people get these lots in too, that weren't able to get them in, in the past. So.
Okay, let's do that then, if everybody's in a ready to be on the conversion for that.
We'll make the changes and, um, we'll, we'll do the wording and with everything else. And let's all take a look at it, make the changes or so forth, um.
Let's, let's see what the, yeah.
All right, um. Halfway done, Mike. All right, uh, last but not least, uh, special community reports, um, was better.
Let's see, I'll put for you the October monthly reports. Um, all of the zoning reports, you will note, and that's some of the items that have been on the property maintenance report that were open have moved to the closed status. Um, Andy has been out in force, um, working with the homeowners, um, to resolve the matters. And so the goal is always compliance, um, not to go to court. So he continuously works with them. So you'll notice a lot of these are still on the report uh, because it's continued, um, continuing enforcement of working with the homeowner. So you'll see the open and the closed status for the residential and the commercial. And you will also see the normal reports for the zoning log and the number of ENS inspections. And then you'll see the planning report, um, for the month of October. We were able to get all of these completed early this month. So we see all of the boundary surveys and the overview the subdivisions, the major flats, conditional use, accessory applications. So all the reports are here for the month of October, along with the building department reports. If you have any questions, I'm drafting today, because since the month closed on Monday, unfortunately, I can't guarantee you until today. If you have any questions, just let us know. We'll be happy to answer them.
Has, has the Dollar General passed all their inspections? CEO's issued by Christie Hookup, everybody up and on.
Well, they do have electricity, um, they're under a CO. There are items that they have 30 days to complete and they probably can do half of things. Not a lot of major things, mostly exterior, there was a couple of things inside the line.
Did they have, uh, many or any of their inspections done by outside firms? Or did the county conduct every inspection?
I believe they conducted all of them, unless they might have, they might have had a third party for the footing. We'd have to check with the county, we're sure.
Anything else?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to Commissioner Collins.
Um, as always, thank those who came, um, to attend tonight, as well as anyone that might have joined via Zoom. Um, I think we've had a lot of good discussions again tonight. I know that these have been some really long meetings, but we've had a lot of topics that have come up that we've been trying to address. So thank y'all for your patience. Um, can't believe it's November already. We have so many things that are getting ready to come up. Um, please make sure you go out and vote. Um, we've got some holidays, Veterans Day and, um, Thanksgiving, so, um, yeah, everybody stay safe and vote for the meeting again in December.
Everyone?
Same as Ms. Hight, thanks everybody for coming. This crowd's getting a little less, and once that's completely empty, then I guess, because it was just Halloween last night, we ate too much cake. You know, you know, like I said, be safe on the holidays, be a lot of travel. I'm, it's risky, but they never seem so much traffic, but be careful out there.
Ms. Young?
Uh, again, echo everything Ms. Hight said. Um, the one thing that's scaring me a little bit is this big project coming up next month. So, I, I think, as you alluded to, it's something we need to really put a lot of thought into. I, I certainly can say it's, it's way over my head and a lot of things probably I don't understand. And, and we really have to think it through and, you know, if that takes another month, then, then so be it. Um, I think ultimately it's probably going to end favorable, but I think there's a lot of questions. Um, I know I have a lot and I've had a lot asked of me that I just honestly don't know how to answer. So I think this is gonna, this is gonna be a gateway for a while. This is the biggest project that will come to town in the county and we've, we've got an opportunity to get it right. We've got a really big opportunity to get it wrong. So I think we need to, to make sure we definitely got our house accosted.
Sure. Yeah, I started to pay for it enough, but we had a meeting, a joint meeting last month with the EDA. Um, it did not turn out well, not, not in the least. I, there was a lot of discussion, but, uh, uh, in my opinion, very little understanding what was going on, but we didn't go a lot wrong. I hope we can work with EDA in the future, but based on that video, it's gonna have to be under a lot of different circumstances. I look for the EDA to get their act together, uh, to understand what their role in this community is. And I'm not just speaking to one EDA member, as you well know, um, but as, as, uh, Mr. Ashcraft said, they had to move the EDA a bit. Six months since they've been working with us, consulting. And something's got to do, something's got to do with it yet. Uh, I think you all will agree that in that we can do, they have them up there, but everyone that we got to to come to realization of what their real role is and how they, they roll out it. Uh, Mr. Ashcraft asked me to, since I had asked him to, uh, talk about the roles and responsibilities, he had asked me to that. I tried to find the roles and responsibilities of the EDA and, and I did go into the section of 15, 15.2, uh, section 49. Uh, really explains everything, what they can do and can't do. And I gave him a copy of one section that, which I'll, if they had already lived out there already. And, uh, tried to move forward, but, um, we can't, we can't intervene working with them until they're at a point where they can come up with a feasible project. Uh, and they've got to understand how those projects have gotten combined and what their role and responsibility is in getting. So, other than that, uh, back to same old usual, proud for coming out. Uh, we got through Halloween, that Thanksgiving coming up, so. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. And, uh, I, I I presume that the EDA is, is, uh, is speaking, sort of thinking things out and, uh, and, uh, hopefully, hopefully try to see some traction from them, uh, in, in the next few months. Um, and while we are certainly independent of them, um, we have to provide a method for the county. And, um, and hopefully, we could continue to move in that direction. Uh, we got a lot of stuff, uh, discussed tonight and a lot of stuff on the agenda for our next couple of meetings. So, thank you to the staff for, um, you know, you all, you all got a lot of, lot on your plate. So, uh, thank you in advance for what you've got coming up. It's kind of that time of year where things, yeah, there's just a lot going on.
The holidays and everything, so, so balance is, is all um, so above all, just make sure you prioritize your personal, you know, right with your, your family as well. We're moving to that time here, um, that's my, I think a suggestion I can make about in there, know that as well. And, and it's asking before they even know it, so, um, thank you for your, for your effort though. But prepare for this meeting and what you have ahead. Um, this time, I'll, um, like to entertain a motion to the end of the meeting.
Something mentioned. Who, I have a second.
Second.
All right, uh, motion made properly seconded. Can you get our call out there, please?
Mr. Callen?
Aye.
Ms. Hight?
Ah.
Mr. Wagner?
Ah.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. In German.